Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting today, Tuesday, July 19th, 2016. And Janet, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Villepadouin.
Here.
Vice Chair McKenney.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
And Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Tabacco is absent.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the conflict of interest. Any planning commissioner, authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered or to be declared their conflict. Do we have any? None, thank you. Moving on to item one, public comments. There's no action to be taken on this. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Each time cannot be yielded to another person. Under the state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, you'll state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire planning commission board. Do we have any public comments? We have none. Onto the consent calendar. Item two. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action by the planning commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. On this, in this case, on this one, today, we're doing item 2.8 and item 2.2 is one. And then we will do item 2.1 for the May 17, 2016 minutes to be motioned for approval on that. Okay?
Okay, move for approval of item 2.8 and 2.2.
Second.
Okay, Chair Villepadouin.
Yes.
Vice Chair McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Janet, real quick, I think I have to excuse myself from that. One.
But that was just for the consent calendar, 2.8?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah. My apologies. Okay, on to item 2.1. And this is to the approved minutes of May 17th of 2016. Can we get a motion?
Okay, move for approval, 2.1.
I'll second.
This is the one you'll have to sit out. So Vice Chair McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're going on to item three, public notice under item 3.1, the Senate Bill 5, known as SB 5, the zoning code amendment project description. And Donna, if you could give us the project description, please.
Senate Bill 5, SB 5, the proposed zoning code amendment will amend Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 151 Flood Plane Management, Chapter 152 Subdivisions, and Chapter 153 Zoning to be consistent with Senate Bill 5, the Senate Valley, excuse me, the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan and the city's safety element, which was amended in July 2015. The zoning code amendment adds Section 153.380 200-year flood protection and will, one, require certain findings to be made to approve any discretionary project or permit that would result in the construction of a new residence within flood hazard zones, the 100, 200, and 500-year flood planes. Two include definitions such as flood hazard zones, urban areas, and urbanizing areas. And three, amend Chapter 151 and 152 for internal consistency and referencing. The proposed project is exempt from analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act under the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects that have the potential for causing significant environmental effects as specified in Section 15061B3. The proposed code amendment implements state mandated requirements related to the 200-year flood protection. All future requests for discretionary approvals related to a project would be required to comply with the city's general plan, codes, and regulations, and will be subject to CEQA compliance.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have the presentation by J.B. Anderson and Associates, David Niskanen.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah.
It's not working.
And my name is David Niskanen. I work for J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning. We've had many projects here in the past, and this one is a zoning text amendment related to the requirements of Senate Bill 5, the 200-year flood plane legislation that was passed in 2007 in response to Hurricane Katrina. In summary, as Donna put, the Senate Bill 5 requires jurisdictions within the Sacramento-San Joaquin Valley to amend their general plans and municipal code to provide long-term planning and land use strategies and to ultimately provide 200-year flood protection by the year 2025. Last July, we updated the general plan safety element to incorporate data and analysis in the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, as well as provide information related to flood hazard zones, levy protection zones, designated floodways, awareness flood plane mapping, and incorporate new policies and implementation measures as a result of this Senate bill. The zoning text amendment, kind of, there's three chapters of the code that are going to be amended with this amendment. In Chapter 151 Flood Plane Management will simply include the definition of flood hazard zone, which is to say the FEMA definition, and I'll have that later in the presentation. And then also to add a section called development within the flood hazard zone to the chapter, and that is to reference the new requirements in another section of the code. It provides some consistency within the municipal code. In Chapter 152 Subdivisions will do the same thing. Will add a new section that references the required findings if development is within, if a new development is within a flood hazard zone. And a new development is defined as a development agreement or a tentative subdivision or parcel map, or discretionary permit or other discretionary action that would result in the construction of a building, or an expansion of a building that would increase the occupancy, or a ministerial permit that would result in a residence. And this map here shows the 100-year flood plane map. The city has not done the analysis required to map what we would consider a 200-year flood plane, where we'd actually take a look at the depth of flood. Like other cities like Lathrobe and Manteca have, certainly they have a little bit more responsibility to do that because they're right along the San Joaquin River, which can provide quite a bit of flooding. As you can see, the 100-year flood plane follows the Stanislaus River in areas west of the city rip and outside this sphere of influence. You can venture down from the river there. The 500-year map, as delineated by FEMA, again, follows the Stanislaus River, but there's much more flooding that can happen certainly in the western portion of Riverbank in this sphere of influence, as well as in the River Cove area, which is right here. Now, if that development was not developed, and they'd come in with a discretionary permit today with this code amendment in place, they would have to make certain findings related to Senate Bill 5 to attain their approval. And that would be to say that they would need to either find the project to be protected from a 200-year flood based on criteria that the state has developed, as well as either apply conditions. And then there's also one more, which is to say that the local flood management agency, or in this case, the city, has made adequate progress based on substantial evidence that the construction would not be within a 200-year flood plane. The CEQA determination for this project, as Donna stated, is exempt through Section 15061B3. It's kind of the general rule that projects that have, that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment, based on the understanding that future projects would have to go through their own CEQA compliance. And our recommendation today, of course, is for you to approve the resolutions in 2016-12 and to recommend city council adopt the proposed ordinance to address the requirements of California Senate Bill 5. And I'm here to answer any additional questions that you may have, certainly with the specifics of the new section in 153, and any other questions that you might have.
I have a question for you. Why does the 500-year map show more flooding possible than the 200-year map? Is it a historical thing?
Yeah, it's based on historical flooding, and it's based on a percentage chance. It's a 0.2% chance of a, like what we would consider a 500-year flood, like one in 500 year flood, as opposed to a 100-year flood, which is a flooding event, a single event, which would be considered, have a chance of one in 100. So it's based on the probability of a flooding of that event can occur. Like, for instance, 100 years, a 0.1% chance, 500 years, a 0.2% chance. I hope that adequately answers your question. It's a little confusing.
What kind of cost is involved?
With?
With implementing something like this?
With implementing the?
The flood plane.
The flood plane, to do the mapping?
Do the mapping, and I'm sure there's going to be some other requirements the city's going to have to come up with once this goes through, right?
Well, the strategy that we've discussed and what is most cost-efficient, and since, as you can see, the majority of Riverbank is outside of the 500-year flood plane. And the areas that are within the 500-year flood plane are, one, outside of the city's sphere of influence, or in an area that is considered, like that has a general plan designation of urban reserve, specifically this area, like urban conservation. And this area is already developed. So once discretionary permit comes in after this code amendment is in place, the first thing we would look at is, answer the question, is the project within a flood hazard area? If it's no, then we say SB 5 does not apply, and we move forward with the processing of the application.
Then you say SP doesn't apply, and then you say, okay, CEQA doesn't apply. But then they kind of like catch 22. One is for environmental, other one flood. Is that environmental or not environmental? Is that just?
Well, within CEQA, there is a section that does discuss flooding. They're different. You know, this is a state mandated requirement. CEQA is also state mandated as well. But this code amendment and Senate Bill 5 acts more, it's like a tool. You know, it's a land use tool for the requirements that are mandated by the state, those certain findings. CEQA is analysis that is later down in the project's processing. So once a project first comes in, this is one of the first things that the planner would look at, is to make sure that, one, these Senate Bill 5 requirements do not apply. And if they do, what would be the finding based on, you know, substantial evidence? So.
Okay, so does Riverbank fall in an area where the percentage of the flooding that will occur, or whatever constitute that we have to even get involved in it?
That's what we're doing right now. We're taking steps to adhere to the requirements of Senate Bill 5, as well as provide a land use tool that the city can use, specifically Donna, to use when projects come forward. Like, say, a subdivision comes forward, she would use this code amendment to confirm that the project is one without, out of the 500-year flood hazard zone, and then also make the statement that Senate Bill 5 does not apply. Because as you can see, the, you know, flooding in the flood hazard zone is really delineated along the Stanislaus River and not within areas that are going to be developed in the future.
We're amending the general plan.
If I could add something, I think where you're going with this is, when a project would come in, I would look to see if it falls under SB 5 first. If it doesn't, or even if it does, the next step is to look at CEQA. When we talk about a CEQA exemption, it's not for the actual project that was within the flood plane. We're talking about the ordinance amendment itself. The ministerial process we're doing right now is exempt from CEQA. But every development project is subject to CEQA or an exemption from CEQA.
But this is adding an extra step to your already many steps, is what I'm looking at.
Correct. This would be the first step, but since we have such a small area, River Cove, it probably won't be used very often, just any construction down there.
I'm looking at, what is the extra cost for us? Do we have to implement anything? Is there any redoctoring of our general plan, specific plans, or anything we got to add to it, to where we're going to be a cost for us revamping the plan that we've already approved?
This is it right now. You've already done, we've already done the general plan amendment, and this is the last step, doing the zoning code amendment to implement those policies, as well as the requirements within Senate Bill 5. Now, the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan is updated, I think, on a five-year schedule, so there could be additional information that we would consider amending the general plan safety element. But right now, that is not even on the table, and it won't be, it won't be for quite a while. The next date they're updating the plan is in 2019. And once we understand what the update is, then we don't, we really don't know.
And I can assure you that when mandates or changes from the state come to us, we do get together with the other small cities in the area to try to work on it together and divide the cost of anything that, in fact, that's what we did with this first, was to try to get together with the other cities and how do we address this without each individual city paying thousands of dollars for maps.
Right. Okay. So how does this play on the developer's part? Is this any extra fees that they're going to incur?
It depends on the projects. So just to pick an example out of the air, say there is a vacant property down at River Cove, and somebody wants to buy, build a house down there. First thing I would look at is the SB 5. And then there may be conditions of approval that cause the house to be built on stilts, or the house to be built further back, to get a variance, maybe to change a setback to move a house location. You know, we'd have to look at the individual project, but considering how built-out River Cove is, I don't anticipate any large amounts of money being spent by developers. Not much, is all I don't believe.
Going to affect the individual homeowner, say they wanted to build a storage shed in their backyard. They've already got the property, they're already living there. Do they have to take out a permit, though? Is that going to?
No, the ministerial permit, where it would affect is if that ministerial permit would result in a residence. And since they already have a residence, if they wanted to do a storage shed, that would be completely fine.
If they alter, if they wanted to redesign their home or something, as long as it's not a new residence, you're still?
That's correct.
Correct. Where that could come into play is if, say, they decide they want a second dwelling unit, then we would have to look at these impacts.
Is the possibility that prior to this SB 5, that you could have been building on a slab, and then now as it comes in, if another parcel's coming in right next to you, they're going to be on stilts or?
That's a possibility.
Well, I'd also like to add that the?
Grandfathering in?
That even though they're in within the 500-year, that levy is 100-year certified. That's what the X in front of the 500 means. So I don't know if that adds a little bit, but.
Requirements for, there's a 500, and a 200, and a 100, are all the requirements different?
The federal 100-year is the main one that requires, and I'm not an expert in the federal, you know, FEMA and all the requirements, but as I understand it, they require insurance is the biggest, biggest hit. But the 200-year is a state mandated, it's not federal. So in other words, say if a property or existing property is within the 200-year or 500-year, in this case, they're not required to get additional insurance.
With this amendment, correct?
That's, that's without or with?
With.
Yeah, the 500-year flood plane is FEMA flood plane, but the insurance requirements for 100-year.
100.
Mm-hmm.
And all tenants in that River Cove have been advised of this SB 5 amendment?
They, the noticing has been published in the newspaper, but not individual noticing.
Additional comments to David?
You don't really have an option to not comply with a state requirement, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, the general plan amendment was July of last year, and now the code amendment's July of this year, and that's the, that's the requirement. And these findings that are within this code amendment are, they're government code language. So it's all basically state-mandated.
Well, thank you, David.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Any comments here on the commission? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public notice, item 3.1, to the floor. Do we have any comments from the public here in here? Okay, we have none. We're closing that. And coming back to us, any additional comments before we move, make a motion? Okay. Can we get a motion for item 3.1?
Move we approve item 3.1, Senate Bill 5, SB 5, zoning code amendment project as description. End it?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Can we get a vote?
Chair Villepadouin.
Yes.
Vice Chair McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart. Okay, that passes 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, item 4.1. It's planning commission information only, no action needed here. And Donna, if you could brief us on this?
Okay, actually, this is pulled until your next meeting.
Ah.
The presenter is not available tonight, so we will have that on your August meeting.
Perfect, okay, August. Thank you. And we have no items for five, item five. Moving on to item six.
Okay, item 6.1, Diamond Bar West. They're, of course, working on their final subdivision map. I do have some news. They have been in discussions with the city, and they will be starting four model homes in the near future, right on Santa Fe. They'd like to have those done by October, so the public can, you know, look at the houses and plan where they want to build next year in the spring. Hayes 4 Phase 1, still working on the development agreement and initial study. Monterosso has a final map that should be coming up soon, as does the Ward Villas. We've been reviewing their off-site and improvement plans for those maps. And then finally, Diamond Bar East, that is under contract now by McCroy Wilbur that has Diamond Bar West. And they will be working on the final subdivision map, and that will include an upgrade to the railroad crossing at Snedeker and Patterson. That's part of their responsibility for that.
Thank you. On that Diamond Bar West, those four model homes, are they going to be built out in that area there?
They will be built right on Santa Fe between Claus and Central.
Thank you. Okay. Item seven, any new business?
You know, I have something that I would just like to touch bases with the other commissioners about.
Please.
I don't know about my other commissioners, but I have been asked over and over about the properties that are being neglected all over town. I'm not talking about lawns that are brown and are being well-maintained. I'm talking about yards that have weeds now, two and three, four, three and four feet high, and they're very dirty. I know that they have to be filled with insects. They're probably a safety hazard, and I'm pretty sure that they're starting to affect the property values of the other houses in the neighborhood. Is there anything that the planning commission can suggest to the city council to try to address this problem?
Well, unfortunately, we only have one neighborhood improvement specialist, and she is out in the field daily. I know quite a few properties are in abatement, and I believe there was two last week that were forest cleanup, where we brought a company in because the property owners basically ignored us. So we brought the company in, and they will be billed for that work. I know there's a couple more coming up close if they don't get them cut very soon. But if you have some specific properties in mind, feel free to email that list to me, and I will ensure that it is on her code enforcement list.
Good points. Thank you. Okay, do we have any further items of discussion? Okay, I'd like to see if we can get a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right. It is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a quick break and then start the appeals.
Okay.
Do you see, still need these, or? Kind of slick, though. Yeah, I kind of dig it. Yeah. They came up.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David.